Good afternoon. Paul Godwin, Development Services. Five minutes, please.
Ready whenever you are.
Good afternoon. This is the, again, Paul Godwin with Development Services, and this is the Marina Apartment Homes Project. The 5.73 acre site is located at 1579 to 1645 Marina Boulevard within the Claremont Mesa Community Plan. The site is owned to RS 17, which allows single-family development, and CC 42, which allows commercial development. The project proposes the removal of an existing recreational vehicle park and construction of 150 market-rate multifamily condominium units. The project requires approval of a vesting tenancy map, site development permit, plan development permit, rezone, and amendments to the municipal code, local coastal program, general plan, and community plan. This is, the site is located in a developed urban neighborhood on the east side of Marina Boulevard, interstate, also east of Interstate 5 and north of Teckalodee Road. Surrounding development includes a gas station to the south, a mix of commercial retail uses to the north, commercial uses at the corner of Frankfurt and Marina, single-family development to the northeast and southeast, and Mission Bay to the west. The site consists of two parcels, a 4.4 acre southern parcel with the 90-unit Coastal Villa RV Park, and the 1.3 acre northern parcel, which is primarily used for storage. There are also six residential units on-site that were built between 1939 and 1960, and the site is not a designated historic structure. The Midcoast Trolley Corridor Project is currently under construction with a new trolley stop to be constructed at Teckalodee Road approximately 1,700 feet south of the site, with service to begin in 2021 approximately. This is a view looking down at the site from Tonopah Avenue, west towards Interstate 5. This is a view of the onsite cut slope located below Tonopah Avenue on the eastern edge of the site. This is the existing storage lot on the north side of the site with the residential structures in yellow. This is looking north down Marina Boulevard with the project site on the right, and this is a view looking northeast down Frankfurt Street with the project site on the left. The project would demolish the existing improvements and construct 150 units in nine three-story structures with 75 one-bedroom and 75 two-bedroom units. 267 parking spaces would be provided, and there are two driveways which are indicated in red. A single-story clubhouse with common area and pool would be provided as shown in yellow adjacent to Marina. Public improvements would include additional right-of-way dedications and replacement of sidewalk, curb, gutter, half with improvements on Marina, including the addition of a bike lane. The project is also conditioned to provide a new concrete bus pad adjacent to the site. Architectural features include plastered walls, archways, wood trellises, and recessed windows in a contemporary style. Maximum building height would be 30 feet in compliance with the height limit. This is a rendering of the project as viewed from Marina Boulevard and Frankfurt Street, and this is a rendering of the site as viewed from Frankfurt Street. The general plan amendment is required to change the land use from commercial as shown in orange and residential as shown in blue to entirely residential. A community plan amendment is required to change the land use designations of low-density residential as shown in yellow, general commercial as shown in red, mobile home park as shown in brown, to entirely medium-density residential. This would allow a maximum of 186 units consistent with the project. The zoning would change from commercial as shown in pink and residential as shown in green to entirely RM 2.5, which would allow up to 180 units. The applicant has requested deviations from the setback, retaining wall height, and storage area requirements. These deviations are supported by staff due to the physical characteristics and constraints of the site. The applicant is requesting to remove the mobile home park overlay designation from the site. The local coastal program amendment is required even though the site is outside of the coastal zone because the map that contains the mobile home sites does contain sites within the coastal zone. There is a history of legal action as related to the applicability of mobile home regulations on this site, all of which have concluded that the site is not considered a mobile home park because of the size and class of vehicles and the short-term tenancy requirements. In March 2006, the city attorney determined the vehicles on-site do not meet the definition of a mobile home, nor is the site considered a mobile home park, and there has been no change in the class of vehicles. Although not required under the California Environmental Quality Act, the applicant elected to prepare an environmental impact report for the proposed project, which determined there would be no significant impacts with the implementation of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. On June 19, 2018, the Claremont Community Planning Group voted 11 to 1 to 1 to recommend approval of the project with design recommendations that were incorporated by the applicant. On October 4, 2018, the Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the project with landscape modifications. The approval motion also included a statement that although the commission considers this a good project, the site density was not appropriately maximized to take advantage of the future trolley line extension and allow for onsite affordable housing due to the existing 30-foot height limit. Staff recommends that the council approve the project as conditioned and proposed, and staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now proceed with public testimony. Clerk, please proceed.
Yes, and due to the number of public speakers, folks will have two minutes apiece, so you can start preparing now. We'll start with our opposition speakers. Martha Welch is our first speaker. Ms. Welch, you'll have two minutes. You'll be followed by Sandy Euclid. Sandy, if you could find yourself in the front row, that would be great. It will help facilitate the testimony, and then we'll turn to the in-favor speakers, beginning with an organized presentation that Ed McCoy will be presenting. Ms. Welch, you'll have two minutes.
Martha Welch, I'm kind of a family who likes to do mobile homes and trailers, and we stayed there one time. And I don't like this because there's no, I mentioned how much they spent, how much is, how much are, how much are, how much are, how much to these people, how much is their money? Nothing about how much it's going to be to the people who own the property. How, you know, the people don't sell or something like that. You know, there's not, they're not here about how they want to sell or not. You know, you always, you always don't have the owners who are seeing them with their property, nothing about how much you, how much you, how much to them. You know, you don't tell that, you know. You don't tell, you know, are you stealing the land or something? Because you don't tell how much the property is worth to them. You don't talk about that. So how much to them, the people who owns property, you don't talk about that. So I don't think it's right to take this right away because where people of RVs and stuff, where is it going to go now? Camper is gone, you're attacking that one. If a family wants to travel with a trailer, something like that, that's where they stay. We came here a long time and we stayed there. I know about this. So I don't see any money to these people, so I don't wonder what's going on here with this property.
Sandy Euclid, please come forward. You'll have two minutes, ma'am. Then we'll turn to the in-favor speakers, beginning with Ed McCoy, followed by Marcella Escobar Eck, followed by James Lamateri.
My name is correctly pronounced Sandy Euclid, and I am a resident of Coastal Trailer Villa RV Park. I'd like to start with, what is the city council's definition of affordable housing? And I'm asking because the people in the lowest-priced RV parks in San Diego are currently paying $700 to $750 per month, and for people living on social security, that exceeds 50% of their monthly income, and the federal guidelines for housing are 33% to 40% of their income. There seems to be a war on RV parks in San Diego because the Coastal Trailer Villa represents 90 units of affordable housing. Camp Land by the Bay is slated to close within three years. Deans Cove closed four to five years ago, and Marina Mobile Village has already been identified on the Marina-specific plan as land that the city wants to develop, to redevelop at some point. Many people cannot go to Santa Fe RV Park because it has a rule saying that your RV cannot be more than 15 years old, which eliminates most, if not all, of the senior citizens, disabled, and low-income people affected by the closing of their RV parks. I could go on, but I am running out of time. I had this prepared for three minutes. I'm going to say that because of the hardship that is placed on the current residents of the Coastal Trailer Villa, I recommend that approval of this project should be contingent upon Fairfield Development paying residents relocation fees equal to seven years of rent for a home comparable in space-square footage so that they don't have to move every six months. Because there is an ordinance here in the city that requires people in RV parks to relocate every six months. It was written in 1942 and is still being enforced today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll turn to in-favor speakers. Ed McCoy has an organized presentation. He'll be followed by Marcella Escobar Eck. Before you begin, sir, let me confirm, folks are here that are ceding you time. Brendan Hayes, please raise your hand. Thank you. Sean Finch. Carlos Rodriguez. Marina Worst. Rob Strezzo. Jennifer Campos. Chris Mandrera. Rachel Lang. Jeannie Kim. And Tabitha Harcom. Thank you. You'll have 15 minutes, sir. Would you like me, you're the sole presenter, so I'll put the time on the clock.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Gomez, members of the council. I'm Ed McCoy. I'm a senior vice president with Fairfield. Fairfield is a San Diego-based, nationally-recognized leader in multifamily housing, so it's good, it's good to actually do a project in the city of San Diego. We are, like I said, we work nationally, so having an opportunity in San Diego is very important to us. We are a full-service development company. We do everything in-house from acquisitions, development, construction, and property management. So we'll be the people managing this property as well after it's constructed. We're excited about the opportunity. Want to thank staff for getting us here, and also want to let you know the entire design team is here with me if there's any questions that may come up that I need them for. I also have a senior vice president, Brendan Hayes, who may be able to answer any questions on the financing of the property, as well as Sean Finch, who is my property or project manager. Go ahead. Next slide. I'd like to start by placing the project in context with the region. As you can see, it's equally, or it's located between two future trolley stops, one at Teckalodee, one up at Claremont Mesa. This is the Midcoast Trolley Extension and is providing an opportunity in this location to increase the density to allow for additional housing along this important transit corridor. Go ahead. In looking at the project itself, the site constraints include an eroding slope along the back of the property below Tonopah, which you saw a picture of a short time ago. We have no sidewalks on Frankfurt. There's about a third of the site is within a flood plain, and this poor street drainage at the corner of Little Marina and Frankfurt. Additionally, a constraint is obviously anytime you want to increase density, you have to look at the context of the location, and in this particular instance, we're in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. So there was the challenge also of working with that neighborhood to ensure that what was built there was compatible, as well as provided additional density that the city is looking for. Here's more of a local level, street level of the site. You can see the intersection of Frankfurt and Little Marina, the no sidewalks, as I said. You can see whether there's been some flooding issues at the corner. There's no bike lanes, and the MTS station is basically a pole with a sign. Looking at the entitlement process, this has been in the entitlement process for quite a long time. Going back to the initial plan amendment authorization, it's been about 15 years. Fairfield's been involved for a little, little less than half that period of time, and it took a little while to get this thing under contract because there's five different owners on this property. Once we got it into contract, we met with staff in 2015. At that time, they were doing the Marina Boulevard Corridor Specific Plan, and that was in response to some things that happened on Marina Boulevard and some neighborhood opposition to what was happening. So staff alerted us that they would not accept any applications or any formal applications on this property until the specific plan was done. So for a period of about a year, we worked with the community, worked with the planning group, and worked on our plans just in terms of, you know, getting the word out that what we wanted to do. And after about a year, we were informed by staff that the city was making a policy change. They were taking the land use section out of the corridor specific plan for the Claremont portion only, which meant that we had to go and then put our, and put our entire application together, all of our plans, all of our filings, and we also conducted an environmental impact report. That 18-month period from the time we first wanted to go into the city to the time we actually were allowed to, and the extensions, cost us about $2 million, just to put it in perspective. This particular site plan is the final site plan that we came up with. We had about a dozen different site plans we worked with the community on, and this is the, the plan that evolved that met everybody's concerns. What we did is on the corner of Frankfurt and Little Marina, we had a taller building that we lowered it to a single-story building because it's adjacent to, across the street from the single-family. We moved the access point off of Frankfurt so that cars leaving the site wouldn't have headlights into people's homes. Additionally, we improved the street drainage at the corner of Marina and Frankfurt, and then we also are going to improve the MTS stop to the degree that the MTS allows us to do that. Go ahead. In the environmental impact report, there's only five public comments, which is unheard of for an EIR. Three of the comments were in support of the project. One of them was informational, and one of them was concerned about traffic. The traffic study indicated that through a traffic signal synchronization program from Teckalodee to Big Marina, if we synchronize those signals, the traffic will actually flow better through that area with the project than it does today, which is very unusual. I'm sure you haven't heard that too often, where a project improvement is actually going to help the traffic in the area than what it is existing today. Okay, this slide, this slide just summarizes the adjacent improvements. You can see the addition of the sidewalk, the bike lane, the MTS, and it also shows you the improvement of that particular intersection as well. As I said, we went through a number of different committees, the Claremont Mesa Land Use Subcommittee, the Claremont Mesa Planning Group, the Marina Boulevard Corridor Specific Plan. Overall, we had over 40 public meetings on this property, on this project, excuse me. We also had coffees, and we met with folks in their homes, and I don't think anybody in the neighborhood and anybody in the community can say they don't know about this project. Here are a few quotes from some of the committees and groups that we had to go to for approval, and everybody that we met was appreciative of our efforts to reach out and to work with them on an acceptable project. The San Diego Planning Commission conducted a hearing in October and unanimously approved the project. They did it, as staff mentioned, expressed some concerns, that it really didn't give them everything they wanted along a true transit corridor, and, excuse me, and they approved it but said that it probably wouldn't approve any more projects like this. They recognized the fact that we got caught up into a timing issue and allowed the project to go forward. However, after that, we had to close on the property. Once you close on the property, it really does dictate how much you can spend going forward, and going forward in any further changes. So our hands are kind of held, are kind of tied. However, we took it to heart what they said. We went back and we looked at what we can do and offer to the city to respond to those issues while still making the project work. To that end, we're prepared today to make a few adjustments to the project in response to Planning Commission concerns, as well as some concerns we've heard at this city council in, in public meetings as well as in discussions. First of all, we'd like to offer four affordable units at 65% AMI. That offer is contingent upon having a prorated reduction in the affordable housing fee. Secondly, we are offering a reduction in parking. One of the issues was that we were overparked along a transit corridor. We believe we can remove 14 spaces and replace them with bicycle parking. We're going to offer a 30-day transit pass on the initial lease-up to tenants to get them used to using the trolley station, since we'll be open about the same time. We're going to add solar panels to the carports to provide for enough energy to support all the house's energy needs, which includes this onsite lighting, the leasing office, the amenities areas. We're going to unbundle the parking. As you know, that means that the price for the parking will be separate from the price from the individual apartment, so it does reduce the need for people paying for something they may not use. And finally, we're going to enhance the MTS bus stop to the degree that they allow us to. Okay, as this site is along the transit corridor, we're providing onsite TDM measures as well, including a co-work location onsite where people can come in and use our facilities, our Wi-Fi, our printers, and work directly from the property. We have a nice fitness center so people can work out. They don't need to get in their cars and drive to a 24-hour fitness in the neighborhood. We're also providing a 30-day transit pass, I mentioned, EV charging stations. Within the garages, we have 15 direct-access garages. We can't unbundle those, but we are going to provide additional charging within those garages at 220 to allow anybody with an electric vehicle to charge it right in their garage rather than having to pull it out and go use an onsite charging station. And then finally, the Living Green. Fairfield institutes a Living Green program with our property management group, where we help residents understand how to be sustainable in terms of cleaning products, waste recycling, and those types of things, so we have all that information available for all of the residents. So beyond that, I also wanted to call out how much this property is going to be contributing to the city as a whole. Overall, the project's going to pay about $42,600 per unit in fees. Now, all of that's not just impact fees, but there includes plan check fees and whatnot. In terms of impact fees, it's about $4 million, which includes the affordable housing fee, the school fees, Quimby fees. I will say that we're paying Quimby fees on this because we're doing a map, a condo map over it, and that requires us to pay Quimby fees. If we weren't doing a map and didn't have, excuse me, a condo map, it would be a little bit less. And then finally, the tax basis for this property, based on the new development, will go up about 10-fold, which is another benefit to the entire community. Okay, as a result of everything that we've done, we believe that we've checked all the boxes. We believe that we've made a very diligent and good-faith effort while still maintaining the spirit of our agreement with the community, because the community was very involved with this, and they were basically one of our closest allies and a very strong stakeholder. So with that, I'd ask you to support the community's support of the project, the Planning Commission's support, and I respectfully ask you to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcella Escobar Eck. Marcella has time seated by Jeanette Temple. I see Jeanette in the front row. You'll have four minutes, Ms. Escobar Eck, and you'll be followed by James Lamateri, and followed by Joyce Sanyada.
Good afternoon, Council President Gomez, Council President Pro Tem Bree, and congratulations, council members Campbell, Montgomery, and Marina on your recent appointment. My name is Marcella Escobar Eck, and I'm here in support of the project. One of the things, as you heard from Mr. McCoy, this has been a tough site, and it's been a tough process. 15 years is nothing to sneeze at on a project that's been going through a very difficult process. And one of the things that we did take to heart, as, as Mr. McCoy mentioned, were some of the concerns that were raised by the Planning Commission. So we went back and tried to retool what the project could do. Unfortunately, one of the things that's come to light is we understand that the city attorney's office has an opinion that the fee cannot be prorated because 142.1304 does not explicitly state that it can be prorated. If that's the case, then we respectfully request that we go back to staff's recommendation to pay the in-lu fee. This project, simply because of the time and the costs that have already been incurred on this project, cannot sustain the 10% on-site, and it can't sustain paying the fee and providing the affordable housing also. So with that, I respectfully request that you support the project today, based on what you will hear from the city attorney's office. We hope that you will then either prorate the fee if it's allowed, or allow us to go back to the in-lu fee if that's not going to be allowed. And again, if this were a different time and a different place, we clearly would be here with a different project, but the policies have shifted on this project along the way, and they should, as stated by the Planning Commission, hopefully they will not be penalized for a shift in policies along the way. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Lamateri. James, you'll have two minutes. You'll be followed by Joyce Sanyada.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations to our, our new members. My name is James Lamateri, and I'm the spokesperson for Raise the Balloon, a community organization that formed in 2014. Our initial goal was to engage the community in the planning process, and we've been actively involved with the Marina-specific plan. One of the things that Fairfield did early on was to, to work directly with the community and with our group. Our group is actually outside of the formalized community planning group. We're in favor of their project. One reason is that they stayed within the existing community plan and made it work. They spent over the three years working with the community and, and listening to the concerns and listening to things like parking, which I saw something interesting today, that you might be fighting for parking for some projects. They came to a lot of the, Ed and Sean came to a lot of our community planning group meetings that were not associated with their project, and they did that to get the overall vision that the community had for Marina Boulevard and the specific plan. So I wanted to make sure you knew that, and they've been waiting a long time to get this approved. We think it's a good fit for our community, and we're looking forward for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Sanyada is our final speaker. It looks like Ms. Sanyada has left, so that concludes the public testimony on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, chair and fellow council members. I would like to say a few words about this. It's in District 2, of course, and I feel that we have a great opportunity here to finally provide some middle-class-level expense housing for our city. According to the Housing Federation, we have zero middle-class housing available in San Diego. You either have to be extremely rich, and if you're not, if you're extremely poor, you might have a chance, but if you're middle-class, there isn't enough housing. We all know this. We all know this. This was originally proposed as a single-family residential area, and only a few homes then were going to be built on this property. So happily, because of the transit building and because of the community's desire to beautify this area, which is currently an eyesore, Fairfield came in and worked very diligently and hard over the years to come up with this proposal, and worked with the community, which as you know, has a reputation of being difficult in terms of new projects. However, I don't think that reputation is fair because the community believes that they would like to have their children and grandchildren, when they grow up, be able to move close to them and be able to find housing here in the city of San Diego, and if they can do it in our own neighborhood, that's even better. So the community worked hard with the Fairfield people, and the Fairfield people were very diligent to take into account the community's desires, and I applaud them for that. And they're going to continue on as the management company, and I think that's important as well because their hearts are in the right place. So the constituents in my community are in support of this much-needed development, and as you can see from the photos of the site as it is currently, it is an eyesore. Hardly anyone lives there anymore. It's down to six residents in the entire six acres. The new development will bring 150 middle-class neighborhoods to our neighborhood. And as a supporter of affordable housing, I look forward to working together so that we can pass legislation to change the in-lu fees and also pass legislation to require new developments in the future will include affordable housing units. Now, these are things that we have to do in the near future. Meanwhile, I have a question for the city attorney. The developers offered to make four of the units affordable. It would be two two-bedrooms, two one-bedrooms. They would be the same size, the same units, as the other units. And I'm asking the city attorney, is it possible that they could prorate their in-lu fee instead of paying in-lu fee for 15 units, which would be 10%, to 11 units so that they can provide the four affordable units, and at least we'll get a start on what we want to do in the future in terms of mixing the economic ladder of people able to live in these units?
Deputy City Attorney Corinne Newfer can answer that.
Yes, thank you for that question. Under the municipal code, the inclusionary housing affordable fee is required for all development unless an exemption applies, or they are providing 10% of the units on-site. There is no allowance for a partial payment under the code as it currently is written.
So that precludes their ability to prorate?
At this time, yes, it does.
At this time, okay. Well, with that in mind, I want to move forward and make a motion. I move that staff recommendation, subject to the following project features as presented by the applicant, be accepted. Number one, reduce the parking currently shown on Exhibit A described in Condition 43 by 14 spaces, and those spaces will be replaced with bicycle storage facilities. The applicant, number two, will provide a 30-day transit pass for all initial lease tenants to encourage them to use public transit. The applicant will add solar panels on the proposed carports to provide power for the common area lighting and amenities and the lighting throughout the project that is communal. The parking will be unbundled except for the direct-access garage units. The applicant will work with MTS to provide a shelter at the MTS bus pad referenced in Condition Number 49 of the permit. The applicant will provide an onsite Condition Number 49 of the permit. The applicant will provide an on-site co-work lounge for the residents, and will provide an on-site bicycle repair area for the residents. So my recommendation is that we support the staff recommendation, that we approve this plan, that we celebrate it as the first plan of the new year that'll bring some middle-class housing to San Diego. It's a start, and we can move forward from here. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bree?
Yes. Councilmember Campbell, I will second your motion. I'm a big believer that you can't change the rules in the middle of the game on someone, and Fairfield and the community worked in good faith on this project with the rules that were in place, and so I am happy to second the motion today.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Council President. I do want to thank the Fairfield team for your real diligent and very long-lived work on this site. It is clear that you have worked just so much to engage the community and really try to get the best possible project for the particular area, and I definitely want to applaud that. Community engagement is key, I think, to try and getting good things passed here in San Diego. Furthermore, you know, you're using great materials. The aesthetics are wonderful. You have a lot of off-site improvements. You have a lot of TDM management improvements, and all of that certainly is to be applauded and celebrated. And I do recognize that unfortunately, our city's policies, from my perspective, have definitely fallen out of line, as you have gone through this extensive timeline, and different priorities and different interests have changed. Different councilmembers have changed over that time period as well, too. You also went through this during a very contentious community plan update, and so that is ongoing, and there will be continuing to be more work along Marina Boulevard as well. So this is ever-evolving. But here today, as part of this action as well, you're also requesting a community plan amendment to get you up to a medium-density residential status for this site, which seems to have community agreement, and that's great. But if you were to be able to fully maximize that opportunity, we might be able to see between 180 and 186 units on-site. And I recognize that there are other development parameters as well that are constraining the site as well, too. So whether it's the total number of units and people associated, which have a certain level of environmental impact, that's one thing that we're talking about. If it's some other kind of dynamic that is a part of the site, a part of the physical development, that's something that hopefully could have been touched out a little bit more. My point is that I feel like we're not actually able to get something that has become my value, that I have been consistent on. And while it's not necessarily why, it might be, for some perspectives, changing the rules of the game from the long-lived process that you've been on. For me, it's actually being consistent with the value that I hold very important, that is, we have to make sure that people coming up to city council for these kinds of rezones and community plan amendments understand that my values are in line with at least a 10% affordable on-site opportunity. And I know that all that you've invested, you're already sunk into this project, leaves you possibly in an economic place where that just may not be possible anymore. But for me, I must be consistent with previous actions. We've had a number of really decent projects last year, too, which I have exercised a no vote on for the very same reason. We're never going to get us to actually come together and move this mountain, I think, unless we are showing others that we are going to be standing up on that word. This is in a transit priority area, so all of these, affordable housing inclusion, making sure that we're making the most that we can, that is also in agreement, to the extent possible, with the community, is important. And so I just think that, for me, I'm not quite 100% there. Again, applaud for all the community participation that you've exercised on this. So thank you very much for all of that. I will be casting a no vote today for those reasons, but should this move forward, I certainly have no doubt that you will actually develop a very well-designed and well-integrated project into the Marina corridor, and I really wish you the best of luck.
Councilmember Sherman?
Thank you. And first, I need to preface my comments by saying thank you to Fairfield and all you've done to get this project across the finish line. With that being said, the way it's been cut down and restricted and all these things put on top of you, I don't like it. I'm going to vote for it. But to think that there's 6.12 acres right next to a trolley stop, and we're only getting 150 units out of it, that's not going to help our housing problem at all. It's just going to exacerbate it. The more money we keep putting on the developers, keeps costing, makes the price of the product go up, and that's why we don't have middle-class housing. I mean, the amount of time, the amount of fees, the amount of money you've spent trying to appease everybody that needs to be appeased is driving the price up. It's right next to a trolley stop. And I know you did a bunch of things that the planning commission said that you needed to do, and hoped that you would do. But the planning commission also said that you are here after overcoming an outmoded height limit and a strong neighborhood pressure to reduce density. Well, eventually, this council is going to need to stand up and say, you know what? Density is going to need to happen, especially in transit priority areas, and it's going to need to happen in every single district in the city. In Grantville, which is in my district, we carved out Grantville from the Mission Valley Community Plan to make it so, because it's right next to a trolley stop. And we made it so we can have serious density to provide affordable, market-rate affordable, and affordable housing that is subsidized affordable. And we have seen a boom in production of units in that area. Hundreds of units, hundreds, with a goal to getting to 8,000 units in a very small area. And what we didn't do is go out and try and have everybody come up and say, we don't want this because it's over 30-foot, or this might block that, or this might put somebody's headlights in my front window once every other night. We embraced it because we want our kids to be able to live here. And the more we keep shying away from density and putting opposition to everything under the sun that comes before us, and adding prices to what you all produce, because at the end of the day, you're not going to sit there and say, I'm going to eat the $2 million in fees. That gets passed on to the cost of every single unit and drives the cost up for people who want to live here. That's why the cost of living is so high. I'm going to support it, understand why you did what you did, but this council really needs to seriously look at height limits and those types of things around transit priority areas and transit corridors, because we're not doing enough. And I will cast a yes vote, but it's a reluctant yes vote.
Councilmember Moreno?
So I'd like to echo some of the sentiment from my esteemed colleague. We are looking for more density. I am looking for more density all over the city of San Diego. So regarding the municipal code section that we've discussed, I respectfully disagree with interpretation by the city attorney. I want to support Councilmember Campbell's motion and moving this project forward. However, I'd like to request a written opinion from the city attorney on this matter, so we can have more clarity moving forward at LUNH. So I will be supportive.
Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery?
This is a really tough one for me, because I was under the impression that there would at least be an effort to include four affordable units. I thought that that was barely, you know, making it for me. But now that, unless we decide to do something different with regard to what the city attorney has told us, there will be no affordable units included in this, in this development. In addition to what Councilmember Ward and Councilmember Sherman have spoke about, and our efforts to be inclusionary, and also to have projects that are inclusionary, this is just a really, this is a tough product, or tough project to support. What I would like to know from Development Services, and you probably will not be able to provide this answer today, and that is okay, but I would like feedback about what types of projects are in the works still that have been sort of sitting in the department for over a decade, that came in with different expectations, and now we're more focused on inclusionary housing. Because I don't, I do not want to support any other project that has less than 10% of affordable housing. My district has built nothing but low-income, very low-income affordable housing for the last three or four years. And we are being inclusionary and making that sacrifice, and we feel like everyone else should, too. So I would like to know, just in moving forward, that how long are we going to be faced with this as a council, where we have to make these tough decisions and kind of deal with what the direction has been prior to us being here, just so I have an idea. Because what we were also told is that this would not set precedent, you know, and I'm concerned about that, too, because I don't know if that's true. So I'm just assuming you don't have an answer, like, right away, and that's totally fine.
Paul Godwin, Development Services. You are correct. I don't have an answer to that right now, but we'll definitely work with our management to provide what we can to clarify that issue for you.
Thank you. Just one other question. So there's no partial reimbursement, but that's not the right word, for the in lieu fee, but there would be a full, could there be a reimbursement for the full fee that has been paid?
There's no mechanism to allow for partial payment. I'm not aware of anything that allows for reimbursement. However, with that said, there are other mechanisms, like a variance or a waiver, a reduction of the affordable housing regulations, that could have been pursued, but that was not in front of you today.
Okay. So are you telling me that there were other mechanisms that could be used to provide affordable units in this project?
What I'm saying is that should there have been a desire to do a partial payment, there was a way to make that happen for today. We were just not aware of it until noon.
So, okay, well, let me say this. I would like to explore that. I don't know exactly what that means for everyone that is here. But in light of that information, I'm not going to be able to support this going forward today, because I thought that there would be units included. And then, if I'm hearing there's another way that that might still be able to happen, then I'm not going to support this moving forward.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments and input on this project. I'm going to start with, I'm not going to be supporting this project. And it's not so much, because I appreciate the extensive community input, but just like some of my colleagues have stated, we have an opportunity to maximize, densify this area in a way that this project is not doing. And I understand the why. The community was pretty expressive of that position, but I think as people that have been elected, I think we have the responsibility to also set a different tone. And I think there's a lot of commitment from the dais related to addressing the housing crisis. And if this is the path that we're going to be taking, and not maximizing transit-oriented areas in which this location is such, we are never going to get there. So because of those reasons, I'm not supportive of this. And also related to just the affordability aspect of things, but for me, it really is about the densification of this area, specifically when the applicant is asking to, there was a lot of references to the changing the game. Well, actually, the applicant is asking to change the game by asking for some of the amendments, such as the community plan amendment and the rezoning, to be able to fit this new version of the project. And I get that, but we are changing the game even now. So let's just, I just really want to put it out there. We have a trolley line that will be opening in 2021, not far from this project. And I just feel that this is setting a precedent, and this is setting a tone, not just for the developers, but more specifically for the community. And we really need to, I'm hoping that we don't do, that we stand strong in really addressing the housing crisis and the inclusion of all affordable levels throughout the city. So those are my major concerns, and I appreciate the changes that you're bringing forward. I appreciate the extensive community input, but I think we need to send a stronger message to the community that we are in dire need of having to develop more, and we're missing a huge opportunity here. So because of that, I cannot support this project. So with that, Councilmember Bree?
Councilmember Campbell, so I'll just say this. I feel like we're getting conflicting opinions today from the city attorney, and that's very upsetting to me, actually. So I want to understand, are we allowed to have a partial in lieu fee, and why can't we make an amendment today on the spot to have a partial in lieu fee in four units?
So I apologize if I provided confusion. So the options to provide a partial payment would be to do a code amendment, which is not in front of you today. The code does not allow for a partial payment. There is a section of the code that allows for a variance, waiver, adjustment, or reduction of inclusionary affordable housing regulations. Specific findings need to be made, and the item needs to be noticed to include that waiver that is not in front of you today. The third item, the third option, would be to do the approval by uncodified ordinance to allow for a partial payment. Again, that is not in front of you today. It hasn't been prepared or noticed that way.
So I'll just say this. Every day we don't approve this project, it costs the developer money, and I'm very aware of that. So I am going to reluctantly also support this project today. I appreciate that all my colleagues have talked about the importance of more density going forward, the importance of affordable units on-site going forward. I do feel, though, that this developer acted in good faith with what the rules were. It is perfectly legal for them to pay an in lieu fee of $1.16 million. That is the law today. And if that is the law today, you know, I believe I have to vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bree. So with that, please vote. Oh, Ms. Councilmember Campbell?
Oh, I thought I, sorry. I didn't push the light. I would just like to say that we did not know until this afternoon that this was a problem, and the whole problem really is because it couldn't be noticed ahead of time. And I think to lose the opportunity for middle-class housing in an area that's so close to the water, and that's why we have the 30-foot limit, to lose that opportunity to provide at least 150 middle-class spaces and four, just like them, affordable spaces, I think that is a complete loss of common sense. I think we need to, we need to figure out a way that we can get noticed, that we can fix the rules. And I wonder if in the past, there have been other people who did prorated payments on in lieu of fees, and I believe there were. So I would like the city to look into that. And if that precedent has already been set, I would like that to apply also to this developer. So I think there's other things we can think about and do. And I'm sorry that we didn't know about this, and we didn't have enough time to do the notice, because I think it would be a wonderful project. I'm definitely still for it. I understand what everybody's saying about density, but I'm telling you, this place was zoned for single-family homes, and there were maybe going to be six built. Now you're going to have 150 living units. So I, you know, I just, I cannot comprehend saying no. There's principle, and there's practical. Practical is, the shovel is ready to go in the ground. This thing is ready to go. Practicality is, in two years or less, we can have 150 middle-class families living there, using the trolley system, and I think we should go for it. And I'm sorry that the city is, we need to be more proactive in finding out ahead of time, how can we make this 10% or maybe 15%? How can we make this work? We have to get rid of this $1.89 a square foot in lieu of fee. It's ridiculous. So that's all I have to say, is let's support this, and let's So that's all I have to say, is let's support this, and let's get it done. Let's start building.
Councilmember Moreno?
So I appreciate the interpretation by the city attorney, but, and thank you for that. But what would we have to do today to move forward with the four low-income housing units?
You would either need to return it to staff to have it come back with that waiver or that reduction in the fee with the ability to make those findings, or to have the approvals come by uncodified ordinance in order to allow for the partial payment.
So what if we disagree with your interpretation and we want to move this forward today? What is your recommendation? No, I'm asking. I mean, you, you know?
My recommendation...
I could ask, I could ask that question. I mean, you're here to give us legal advice, right?
My recommendation is that the code does allow for the in-lu-ah payment to be made, and that would allow them to comply with inclusionary affordable housing regulations.
I would also add, we are more than happy to work with everyone ahead of time. Unfortunately, what was noticed today is what's in front of you. We have told you, based on the wording of the code, that what was proposed is not allowable. As you pointed out, we advise, it's up to you whether to accept our recommendation or not.
But you could still counsel us if we want to move forward against your recommendation? Or you wouldn't counsel us if we decided to move forward?
We would always provide you legal advice. We give you advice, and then sometimes we defend.
So that's my question. That's my question. Should Councilmember Campbell want to move forward, and should I want to second it, what would be, what would have to happen?
You would need to modify your motion.
Okay, and what would you recommend the motion to be?
Apparently, what was proposed by the applicant?
Thank you.
So we currently do have a motion on the floor, and that has been seconded. So we need to vote on that motion, or the maker of the motion is able to amend the motion. But we need to vote right now.
Can I give Marcelo my 18 seconds?
Sure.
With all due respect, councilmembers, while I appreciate that this is a tough decision today, we also don't necessarily want to be legal guinea pigs right now. And we didn't feel, we feel that the ordinance being silent was permissive. There are projects that have been allowed to prorate them without having had an uncodified ordinance. We apologize if this should have been vetted beforehand, but we really, this project has taken quite a beating, and we respectfully request that, assuming we're moving forward with the recommendation for approval, that we move forward today and respectfully request that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor to move forward with the project as presented by staff. It's been seconded, so please vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
And that passes 6 to 3 with Council President Gomez, Councilmember Ward, and Councilmember Montgomery voting no.
Thank you. We do not have any city attorney report from closed session, and we don't have any request for adjournments in memory. We will now adjourn council to the next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, January 14, 2019, at 2:00 p.m. This meeting is adjourned.